Welcome, everyone. I'm Boise City Council President Colin Nash. I am stepping in for the mayor tonight, who is out of town. We'll start tonight's meeting with an invocation, recognized by a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Corliss, here. Hallie Burton.
Here.
Morales.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Stead.
Here.
Willetts.
Here.
All present.
All right, I'd entertain a motion for minutes from August thirteenth.
I move approval of the minutes for the work session and regular meeting of August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Stead.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right, that takes us to special business. Uh, we have a couple of appointments here. Patty Bowen and Elizabeth Padian. Um, I don't see Patty. Is Elizabeth here? Hi, Elizabeth. Um, is Patty Bone online? Okay. Well, I'd entertain, um, unanimous consent request.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent for the reappointment of Patty Bowen to the Open Space and Clean Water Advisory Committee for a three-year term ending September first, twenty twenty-seven.
Without objection? It is so ordered.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent for the.
Can I just make a few comments? Uh, just want to thank Patty for her willingness to be on this board. We're appreciated appreciative of her service. Uh, she's been a great asset to the Open Space and Clean Water Advisory Committee, and we're we're indeed grateful for her service.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I ask unanimous consent for the appointment of Elizabeth Payden to the Open Space and Clean Water Advisory Committee for a three-year term ending September first, twenty twenty-seven.
Without objection? It is so ordered.
Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a couple of comments.
Yeah, yeah, Councilmember Stead.
Um, I've had the pleasure of working with Elizabeth on a couple of projects, and I just really appreciate her commitment, um, to leadership, and I look forward to, um, seeing her notes as we as she gets through these meetings, and thank you for your service. It's not easy to be on a commission, but it's necessary, and I appreciate your service.
Elizabeth, you want to give any remarks? You're welcome to, if you feel comfortable. You don't have to, though. Why don't you come up to the mic up here? Might need to turn that on. Should be a button on top.
Oh, yeah, it's on.
Okay, great.
Um, no, I just want to say thanks for, um, Meredith Stead and Jordan Morales for, uh, meeting with me and being somewhat of a mentor for me, and this is kind of my first foray into, uh, uh, local politics. So I'm super excited. So thank you for, um, yeah, having me here.
Great. Thank you, Elizabeth. We appreciate your service. All right. Looks like that concludes our special business. We move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Stead.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right. Next up, we have ordinances. Councilmember Stead, if you could.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that all ordinances on the second reading calendar be read by number and title only and filed for the third reading calendar.
All right. Uh, hearing no objection. Uh, it is so ordered.
ORD dash eighteen dash twenty-four. An ordinance entitled the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-four. Appropriating one billion, four hundred forty-six million, nine hundred fifty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars, deemed necessary to defray all expenses and liabilities of the city of Boise City, Idaho for said fiscal year, specifying the objects and purposes for which said appropriation is made, repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance, authorizing a levy of a sufficient tax upon the taxable property and providing effective date. ORD dash nineteen dash twenty-four. An ordinance amending Title Nine, Chapter Two of Boise City Code. This amendment updates the definition of a dwelling unit or accessory dwelling unit, the development impact fees per service unit and related schedule of development impact fees, and provides an effective date of October one, twenty twenty-four. ORD dash twenty dash twenty-four. An ordinance, C R twenty-three dash zero 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 twenty-four, for property located at eleven eight hundred West Overland Road, amending zoning classifications of the city of Boise City to change the classification of real property, particularly described in Section One of this ordinance and adjacent rights of way from R dash one B residential suburban to R dash one C residential traditional, setting forth a reasoned statement in support of such zone change and providing effective date. ORD dash twenty-one dash twenty-four. An ordinance, C R twenty-four dash zero 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 two, for property located at the southwest corner of the intersection of South Warehouse Way and East Freight Street, annexing seventy-six point thirty-one acres of certain lands and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho, adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Boise City, establishing and determining the land use classification of said seventy-six point thirty-one acres as I dash two slash A I dash O, industrial heavy with the airport influence overlay, setting forth a reasoned statement in support of such annexation and zone change, directing the city engineer to lodge and file a legal description and map for said annexed lands and territory, providing that copies of this ordinance should be filed with the Ada County Auditor, the Ada County Treasurer, the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission, providing a copy of said legal description and map of said annexed lands and territory be recorded with the Ada County Recorder and filed with the Ada County Assessor and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law and providing effective date. ORD dash twenty-two dash twenty-two four. An ordinance, C R twenty-two dash zero 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 thirty-four, for property located at six seventy-two to six seventy-eight Ash Street and eleven ten to eleven thirty-six River Street, amending zoning classifications of the city of Boise City to change the classification of real property, particularly described in Section One of this ordinance and adjacent rights of way from MX dash five to MX dash five slash D A, setting forth a reasoned statement in support of such zone change and providing an effective date.
All right, thank you, clerk. Moving on to the last item on the agenda today. Um, we have a public hearing for C R two-three dash zero 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 two zero. Uh, modification of a development agreement. This is the third time that we've heard this, um, in some, uh, in for different reasons. Uh, but I do have some comments about the public hearing, but I'll save those till you presented, David. If you could take it away for us.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The item before you tonight is a development grant modification to allow the uses associated with the diocese's chancery building, including the addition of a thousand square feet of commercial space on the ground floor. And as you can see in this vicinity map, the site is located in a commercial intersection at the edge of the North End neighborhood, and is addressed at nine oh two North Eighth Street. The surrounding area served by several bus routes, bikeways, and within walking distance, the downtown area. The site has a little bit of a history. In two thousand seventeen, a four-story mixed-use building was approved for the property. This proposed building is of similar height to what is being being proposed now, and the site was rezoned at that time for to an R O H D with a development agreement from an R two H D zone. However, the planning approval for the mixed-use project expired, and it was never constructed, but the property was rezoned and the DA recorded. Therefore, DA modification to change the use in the building design and a conditional use permit for a height exception and park induction was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The commission recommended approval of the DA modification and approved the conditional use permit for the height exception and parking reduction. However, this conditional use permit or approval was appealed by the North End Neighborhood Association. On April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, the city council heard the DA modification and the appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision to approve the C U P. At this hearing, the council upheld the the commission's approval, but denied the DA modification due to concerns regarding the loss of mixed-use development with residential units as required in the original DA. On March seventh, twenty twenty-four, the applicant requested reconsideration of the DA modification, which was approved by the council. At the hearing, the council directed the applicant to to adjust the project and provide a greater mix of uses on the site. They also directed the planning team to schedule a new hearing. In response to the council's direction, the applicant lowered the building height and revised the ground floor with the addition of a thousand square feet of commercial space. The new building design or elevations and the floor plan are shown here on this slide. This slide lists the required findings for a rezon as per the legacy development code. In summary, the proposed DA modification complies with all the required findings as discussed within the project report. The planning team also received letters of support and opposition in regards to the project. The letters of opposition basically expressed concerns with the proposed building height, design, parking, and traffic, which were already decided with the approval of the conditional use. In addition, some letters of opposition expressed concern to the proposed use, but the applicant has adjusted their plans to provide the commercial space on the ground floor. And therefore, the planning team recommends approval of of the DA modification, C R twenty-three zero 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 two zero to city council. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Um, before we open the public hearing, I just want to share some thoughts with you about correspondence that I've received about this project and just kind of set some expectations for the general tenor of this public hearing. Uh, I've received comments both for and against the project, um, that are often irrelevant to land use application. And we heard even some of that testimony in the previous public hearing that we had, that we should deny this project because I don't like the Catholic Church, or we should approve this project because the Catholic Church is a great asset to our community. Um, I would strongly encourage those testifying to keep your comments focused on the land use application before us. Um, and understand that what council and what the city would like to do is create an atmosphere where everyone feels respected for their beliefs, um, that institutions are respected uh, for the opportunity that they give people to exercise their religious freedom, and that those are values that we share, and we want to make sure that tonight's hearing is focused on the land use application before us that council has, um, is now considering in a public hearing for the second time. So, um, if I will probably be interjecting to make sure that we keep, uh, folks focused on the nuances of the app of the application that's before us, of the land use considerations here. Um, just know, do so out of respect for your time and for what we have before us. So, um, I appreciate everybody being here tonight, and we want to have a good discussion to make sure that we get the right outcome for the city. And thank you for, um, considering my, um, advice heading into this hearing. So with that, I would ask the applicant to come forward. Welcome back, Deb.
Thank you very much. At the outset, before we get started, may I ask for twenty minutes, please?
Right. You probably twenty. Yeah, we're good.
Thank you very much. Mayor, as you are this evening, uh, and council members. My name's Deborah Nelson with Givens Persley. My address is six oh one West Bannock Street in Boise. Um, and it's my pleasure to be here tonight on behalf of the applicant, um, along with representatives, uh, of the entire project team, which includes tonight's diocese representatives, the Bishop Peter Christensen, Christian Welp, and Chuck Lawrence, our project architect team, Lombard Conrad, legal counsel Megan Wald, and others. I would like to walk through applicants updated submittal to you in support of reconsideration. This includes the changes that we made to the building and to the use, the changes that we considered but did not make. Um, I also want to discuss the legal religious protection arguments that we've made in support of, uh, the submittal and for your consideration, and also the city's responsive points to those arguments that are included in the project report. We want to thank at the outset also David Moser and the planning team for their work and continued support of the chancery project at Eighth and Fort Street. Um, we agree with the project's report's description and conclusion of how the proposal project meets the city's rezon criteria, which is the applicable criteria for a DA modification, including consistency with Blueprint Boise being in the public interest and compatibility with surrounding zoning and development. We also agree with staff's recommended conditions of approval for the project, um, except that we would ask that condition number one be updated to reference the plans submitted on July thirty-first, which are the changes that we will present this evening. As David introduced to you, since the first council hearing, uh, the diocese has worked to address council's request for a ground floor mixed-use component to the building. We've agreed to provide a new ground floor mixed-use space at the north end of the building on Eighth Street across from the Co-op Shopping Center. The space shown in here in dark gray is approximately a thousand square feet. The diocese is continuing to explore the feasibility of childcare for ages zero to two to complement the existing Montessori preschool next to Saint John's Cathedral, as well as other options, including a Christian bookstore and or coffee shop in this location or other retail options. The use will be open to the public. A new external entry on Eighth Street has been added with accessible ramp. And I'll show you that when we get to the renderings as well. Although the council denied Nina's appeal of the height exception, the diocese has worked with Nina representatives to redesign the building to reduce the overall height so that the main parapet, which is the point visible from the street level, is under forty-five feet. The diocese also changed the facades to lessen the perceived height and massing, added new details with historic elements to create variation and interest in place of that raised roof line on the ends. The corner roof line was is also reduced, that's at the very corner of Eighth and Fort Streets, but it remains slightly elevated above the main parapet to continue to add architectural interest. The building still includes quality, timeless materials, including sandstone and brick with a slate roof. The Nina Board did vote to support the updated project with the added mixed use and the height reduction. Want to show a few more renderings here, um, in the rear. You can see again the step down that goes towards the, um, alley there and the, um, properties to the north. This is the west side along Eighth Street. You can see the new door that has been added there, um, that is larger than the window adjacent to it, and the ramp is hidden by the wall screening. And the south side along Fort Street. And here are the building elevations showing these same changes. Since the council denial and the subsequent approval of the request to allow this hearing, the diocese has also carefully considered the council's request for housing at this location um, by looking at the building redesign options and considering operational issues. The diocese's conclusion is that it just does not work to integrate housing into the chancery office building. Adding housing into the existing design would limit the available space to serve diocese functions. Building up would add significant costs and exacerbate the height concerns that have been raised by the historic commission and Nina. This would also dramatically change the look of the building after years of trying to design a building that would complement the cathedral and other historic buildings in the area. Even more problematic as the diocese considered this is the operations aspect. The diocese is not a housing developer and does not have the expertise or operational capacity to develop housing or to be a residential landlord to third parties. In our submitted materials, we describe applicable federal and state religious protection laws. These apply to the city's actions and decision here. These are known commonly as R Lupa and F R P. We do not believe that the council intends to discriminate against the diocese and their religious practices or any other religious exercise in the city. But a history of discrimination across the country has led the federal government and states, including Idaho, to pass laws that ensure that no governmental action will burden the free exercise of religion. These lies are, these laws are very broad and very protective. They impose new rules that replace otherwise applicable rules, even when the otherwise applicable rules are non-discriminatory on their face and intent. The effect of their religious protection laws is that applications involving a religious exercise must be held to different standards than other land use applicants, not the same standards, to avoid discrimination. Idaho's statute F R P is particularly strict and very clear in its intent and effect. The statute recognizes at the outset, free exercise of religion is a fundamental right that applies in this state, even if laws, rules, or other government actions are facially neutral. The statute then sets forth the fundamental requirement that government shall not substantially burden a person's exercise of religion, even when the burden results from a rule of general applicability. And government may substantially burden a person's exercise of religion only if it demonstrates that application of the burden to the person is both essential to further a compelling government interest and the least restrictive means of furthering that interest. I'm going to walk quickly through those three terms that are bolded here. First, the free exercise of religion is broadly defined as the ability to act or refusal to act in a manner substantially motivated by a religious belief, whether or not the exercise is compulsory or central to a larger system or religious belief. The proposed chancery office clearly embodies the exercise of religion. In addition to being an office, as defined by Boise City Code, the chancery involves protected religious activities. The bishop and other diocese employees conduct their work to support and guide the exercise of religion at parishes and schools throughout the diocese from the chancery office. Consistent with F R P, the chancery facilitates the diocese's employees' ability to act in a manner substantially motivated by a religious belief. It is actually difficult to imagine a religious exercise more central to this principle than building suitable facilities for the administrative branch of a recognized religious organization to conduct religious activities throughout the state. Second, the legislature has established that a substantial burden is any inhibition or curtailment of a person's religiously motivated practices that exceeds a trivial, technical, or de minimis impact. Requiring the diocese to add housing or any other use to the chancery or denying the chancery for failing to add these uses is clearly more than a trivial inhibition. At the very least, this requires additional cost to add more space or sacrificing space for planned diocese operations or finding a new site entirely, all of which are non-trivial impacts. The project report states that the definition of what is or is not a substantial burden is not clearly defined within laws because these standards are generally reviewed on a case-by-case basis. That statement ignores and is refuted by the Idaho Legislature's mandate that a substantial burden is any inhibition of religiously motivated practices that is not trivial, technical, or de minimis. The project report also looks at alternative sites and concludes that one site is a possible alternative, the diocese's surface parking lot across from Saint John's Cathedral. This is not the case. The diocese, of course, considered this site because it owns it, um, but the site poses too many challenges, including taking away the play space used and needed by Saint Joe's Schoolchildren. Other complications include fitting enough parking to accommodate the existing diocese's uses plus the new chancery use, especially given that the site's geotech can only accommodate one story of underground parking, leaving one or more likely two stories of parking above ground in podium parking before adding the three stories of office use on top of that. When the Baird site came up for sale, it was a better option, given the parking availability, including across the alley to supplement the underground parking garage. And this would avoid the other impacts to the diocese and church and school needs on the existing parking lot. Office use is allowed in both the city code and the DA, as confirmed in early meetings with planning staff. And well before the pre-application meeting, city staff told the diocese that a DA modification would not even be required, and a C U P would only be required for the parking reduction. Even once staff decided it would be best to modify the DA to update to the new use, planning staff has continued to support the project and approval of the DA modification through and including the project report for this hearing, which again finds the applicant meets all of the applicable criteria in city code. It is worth noting also that the city has since rezoned the parking lot site and all of the other properties surrounding the cathedral to MX one, which would not allow the proposed chancery building because the height limit is forty-five feet, and the city has removed the C U P option for obtaining a height exception. Now, a variance is the only tool for adjusting height, and this requires a showing of hardship based on physical characteristics of the site. A forty-five-foot height limit cannot accommodate the chancery office use even before you consider the parking required for the church, much less the additional uses requested by the city for ground floor mixed-use and housing. The project report appropriately acknowledges that any relocation would involve cost, delay, and uncertainty, which, under applicable law, is a substantial burden, just as requiring the diocese to add new uses on the Eighth and Fort site or denying for failure to add new sizes, uh, new uses is a substantial burden. Third, and finally, this means that, under F R P, the city must demonstrate with clear and convincing evidence that denying or burdening the chancery use is both essential to a compelling government interest and the least restrictive means of furthering that interest. The city has not asserted what the compelling government interest that it believes justifies denying the exercise of religion in this case, what that could be. Um, and the city has not provided any evidence that burdening this use on this site is the least restrictive means of furthering that interest. The city's obligations to meet this standard and provide this evidence must be complied with now at the time of this land use decision. The Local Land Use Planning Act requires the city to state the basis of its land use decision, which in this case must include a statement of the clear and convincing evidence that the city relies on for its restrictions on the diocese's religious freedoms. F R P authorizes affected persons to seek relief in court and obtain attorney's fees for a successful claim. We've called attention to these existing legal protections and walked through them in detail because of the council's denial of the DA modification and additional statements by council members at the reconsideration hearing that housing is required to gain approval, coupled with the diocese's determination that housing is not something they can accommodate. At the same time, the diocese has tried very hard to address as many concerns from the council and neighborhood that they can accommodate. That is why the diocese has worked to add a public mixed-use space on the ground floor, and that is why the diocese worked with Nina to reduce the height of the building. I want to wrap up just by noting some of the public benefits the chancery will bring to the area as recognized by the project report. It will replace a long vacant site on a highly visible corner at the entrance to the north end with lasting architecture and materials, including sandstone, brick, and slate. It will provide walkable, bikeable, transit-supported access for employees and visitors. It will provide better access and space for Catholics, non-Catholics, and nonreligious people who seek diocese services, such as the Marriage Tribunal, which handles over three marriage cases a year. And it will allow better integration among diocese-supported institutions, including the cathedral, food bank, school, and preschool, all of which serve Catholics, non-Catholics, and the general public. The diocese is a longtime Boise employer with a significant statewide and local impact, supporting local services through its administrative office, parishes, and schools. Many parishioners live in the immediate neighborhood of the proposed chancery office, and records show there are over five thousand registered Catholic households in Boise. For all of these reasons, we request the council reconsider its prior decision and approve the DA modification to facilitate the project as presented. I would answer questions now or later as you direct.
Councilmember Halliburton.
Mr. Mayor. Uh, Deb Goodesia. Um, what questions for you? First one's just a big softball. Uh, I'm trying to remember when this came to us the first time, if there, if you had the same exterior landscaping on the front, or if that's a new addition as well. I feel like I didn't remember seeing that on the on the original application. Landscaping is the same.
Yes. I'll just repeat that in the microphone. The landscaping is the same.
Landscaping is the same. Great. Um, there's below-ground parking on this structure? Question mark?
Yes.
And what's the number of parking below?
Thirty-one spaces. Thirty-one spaces.
Thirty-one spaces. Great. I didn't see that, like, when we were looking at the different drawings and stuff. There must be an entrance that's a little bit further from the building where you don't see it, and I didn't see, like, a floor plan. So that's kind of where the question came from, the parking. Maybe, I don't know if it was in the earlier slides, or it happens at entrance.
I think, I think, Councilmember Halliburton, we had considered the conditional use permit related to parking, so I'd be surprised if that's relevant to this application.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Halliburton, we did address that previously. It was in prior presentations, and the parking is accessed from the rear to get to both the surface parking, but that's across the alley, and the underground parking garage. But it's not included in these slides because we're just addressing the DA modification.
Great, thank you. And then the final question, I appreciate you coming back with some of the commercial space that you've shown. It sounds like you're still trying to figure out what that may look like. Do you have any ideas of when you might know the answer to those questions?
No, I don't think so, but I think as they continue to finish out the design, that will help, trying to figure out what can work in there. The, the uses that I named are all on the top consideration list.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Nelson, appreciate the work that you've done with the Neighborhood Association and taking council's feedback on this project. I just want to make sure, before we get into the public testimony, that you had asked that the staff recommendations reflect conditions from July 31st. Could you just speak to that a little bit more to make sure that we're on the same page about what you're asking for and what you think staff is recommending?
Yes, Mayor, it's simply to add in condition number one, which lists where the project has to be built compatible or consistent with the plans submitted, to add the plans submitted on July 31st. And that's, those are just the plans that we recently submitted that reflect the compromises.
Okay, thank you for that. Anything else, Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Um, just on that same note, I, I just want to check in on staff's response to that condition.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we agree with that. It's, uh, the date needs to be added into condition one, so it reflects the revised floor plans.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have representatives from the Neighborhood Association that would like to testify? Could you state your name and address for the record?
Sure.
That'd be great.
Sandy Herman, 1404 North Seventh Street. My name is on the list, but I don't think I indicated Nina on there, so. Mr. Mayor and City Council, we appreciate the diocese's willingness to listen to our concerns regarding the project at Eighth and Fort. After two meetings, we do have a building that is reduced in height and has some mixed tentative, tentative mixed use space. We like the new design, especially the new detailing on the facade, and we appreciate that the new design is not everything that the diocese had hoped for, but is a compromise with the neighborhood's interests in mind. We have agreed to support this evolution of the design for this project. We recognize that the change in height was not something the city demanded. It was offered to gain the support of Nina and hopefully move this project forward. A forever weed-filled, empty lot with a hole in the ground isn't an ideal welcome into the neighborhood. As Nina histor, as a Nina Historic volunteer, I often ask residents and developers to go above and beyond what is required by city code. Just last month, I asked developers of a new project to donate more than what was required toward tree, the tree mitigation fund, when neighbors were distraught over the loss of a particularly beautiful and mature cedar. The diocese's project has been delayed by nearly a year as some neighbors fought to save this lot for our most needed resource, housing. And so, as is my custom, I'm going to make a friendly challenge to the diocese. In recognition of concerns of the North End neighborhood, we hope they consider putting some of their great resources towards housing. This lot was unique in its ability to potentially house neighbors with limited mobility close to groceries, church, school, and healthcare. We hope the diocese recognizes the need for this particular kind of no-car-needed housing and finds a way to mitigate this need somewhere in Boise or Idaho by making a considerable donation or funding a project. The Catholic Church is the inventor of the oldest and most prolific housing communities in the world through abbeys, monasteries, missions, hostels, and orphanages. These kinds of housing might seem outdated in our modern era, but I think that we need to reconsider and review the ideas of our past in order to find solutions here and now. The church and diocese are uniquely positioned as one of Idaho's oldest and largest institutions to join many other religious, private, and public organizations in Boise and Idaho currently working on this issue. I'll stand for questions.
Council, any questions for the Neighborhood Association? Okay, Eric?
Good evening. Eric Hagan, 809 North Eighteenth Street, Nina President.
I'll try to resume.
I'll try to address some of the, the processes here and, and get a little bit more in-depth this to the, the board. So back on April 16th, the city council hearing, Mayor McLean took the diocese and Nina to task for not meeting to work towards a compromise. Through her comment, though her comment was more of an after-the-fact comment, like we should have done it before, the diocese jumped at the opportunity and approached, approached the Nina Board to see if they could get, gain Nina's support by finding some compromise in the proposed office building project. After a couple one-on-ones with myself, Sandy, Alexis, Jared,
Chuck.
and Deb, um, we all convened again at the, at July's Nina Monthly Board Meeting on the 30th that we just had. Since the brunt of our concerns in the previous applications has focused around the height exemption, massing use, and associated parking reduction, the diocese presented an updated design with a reduced height under the 45-foot parapet height for structures in our ozone. While this doesn't exactly match the legacy zoning code requirements for the midpoint of the upper-gable roof, we felt it was a great compromise, considering the upper roof will most, mostly not be seen from the street level, and the slope of the roof is not in the solar plane. Chuck Lawrence, uh, took the opportunity to describe in detail how the diocese actually plans to use the ground floor assembly areas. As you recall, there was a classroom, lecture hall, gathering space, gallery, and a cafeteria, and a couple conference rooms. The description he gave about how the lecture and gathering halls will be used not concurrently by multiple groups, but consecutively by the same group, one at a time, as in they'll be meeting in the lecture hall and then breaking to go to the gathering space. This helped alleviate our concern about the rooms being used at the same time and burdening the parking. With this clear explanation of how the space will be used, we feel the parking reduction is no longer an issue. The addition of a mixed-use retail commercial space on the ground floor where the classroom originally was is a step in the right direction. Though we still have concern about how this mixed-use space will be used by the overall general community, we felt it was another great compromise. Since the original conditional request, conditional use requesting a parking reduction and height exemption was approved by City Council at the April 16th City Council hearing, there's really no need, there was really no need for the requirement for the diocese to further address these issues, but they did. They took the extra step and made some compromises. Taking this into account, and after much discussion of the modified design and an overall reluctance for the site to remain as a weed-filled hole for who knows how long, the Nina Board of Directors voted seven to one in favor of supporting the project. That being said, Nina still has many concerns about how this whole process has been handled by the city. I won't get into that. But we do welcome a continuing discussion with the city and PDS staff in a creative and constructive manner moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. All right, we'll now open the hearing to the public. I have a list of those who've signed up to testify in front of me. I'll just read down the list. Some of you would like to testify or not on this list, that's okay, we'll get to you. Uh, just reiterate my statements from earlier about keeping your testimony focused on the land use application before you. If you are hearing testimony that's repetitive in nature and the testimony you were going to share has already been shared, we'd kindly ask that you defer to someone else on the list. And we want to be respectful of everyone's time while also taking into consideration the comments that you have to share tonight. So with that, uh, each member of the public will get three minutes to testify. I'll interrupt you in your testimony if you do go over that. Uh, I would just kindly ask that you pay attention to the clock on the wall there, so I don't have to do that too many times. First, we have Stephanie Wright. If you could, when you come up, if you could please state your name and address for the record.
Stephanie Wright, um, employee address is 1501 South Federal Way, Boise, Idaho, 83705. I fully support this chancery project and the benefits that we will continue to provide to the community. I'm the accounting manager for the diocese. I have three children that attend St. Joseph's, and my family and I attend St. John's Cathedral. I'm an avid supporter of the Co-op and the Co-op Wine Store. I look forward to the ease and the convenience of being able to grab lunch and to continue to support the restaurants and shops that I live near. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, Michael, Dr. Michael Coughlin.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'm Dr. Michael Coughlin. My address is 401 Seven Ridge, Boise, Idaho. I'm a retired physician, having served the Boise community for 42 years at both of our hospitals. I grew up in the North End and have lived there for over 70 years. I know this area well. I stand here to emphatically support the diocen, a diocese and chancery building project designed to replace the Baird's Cleaner Site at Eighth and Fort. This is a beautifully designed building that will enhance the surrounding area. It dovetails with the whole area, an area that embraces a culture of religion, from St. Joseph's School and St. John's, where four generations of Coughlins have attended, to other religious centers like the Cathedral of the Rockies, St. Michael's Episcopal Church, Emmanuel Evangelical Church, the Hill City Church of Ninth, and the First Presbyterian Church. This is a culture of religion that's been there for over 100 years. The architecture of this building is in keeping with other spectacular North End structures such as Longfellow School, St. John's Cathedral, St. Michael's, the Carnegie Library, and Boise High School. There are numerous office buildings also in this area, including St. Luke's Business Office on Eighth, the Percy Building, the Anta Women's Trafficking Office, and the WCA. So an office building is totally in keeping with this area. The work staff for this building typically will be on-site from 8:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, and vacate during the busy weekend worship time, relieving parking congestion. Many of these workers will walk or ride bikes or use public transportation with stops, stops right in front of the building. Most of all, I speak to the developmental agreement for this parcel, which was created seven years ago, prior to the excellent rewrite of the zoning code. Unfortunately, with no sunset or expiration on this development agreement, the vision goals of the new zoning code cannot be achieved unless the developmental agreement is modified. Any change in direction using current regulations, as I understand, would totally work for this development as now decide, as now described. Times do change. Change happens and needs change and goals change, and that's why the new zoning code is so important. Think if anyone tonight proposed a seven-story Cunningham Place apartment building that sits 100 feet away, do you think any of you would vote for this? Because it's not in keeping with the North End as far as the architectural structure is concerned. So I ask you, as a city council, to reverse this stance and give an emphatic approval to the current plan, which would enhance the North End and be a beautiful gateway to the revitalized Eighth Street long-term plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Dr. Coughlin. April Frederick.
Hi, April Frederick, 1416 North Eighth Street. I am representing myself. I, I think this is my fifth time testifying on this issue. After wondering for years what would become of the pit located at Fort and Eighth, I learned the diocese bought this property and planned to erect the office building. In my opinion, there's never been a more perfect place for housing. It's walking distance from a grocery store downtown and restaurants. It would be a great location for those living car-free, or even elderly parishioners who no longer drive could walk to church. Now that the property is owned by the diocese, it has been taken off the tax rolls. If I understand the purpose of tax exemptions for churches correctly, it's because they provide something good to the surrounding neighborhoods.
April, uh, thank you for that testimony, but we're going to stick to the land use application, not other considerations about, uh, tax exempt status of religious institutions.
Okay.
Do you have anything else to share?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you for, thank you for your testimony, April. All right, Kathleen Elliott?
Good evening.
Hi, Kathleen.
Council President Nash and council members. I'm Kathleen Elliott. I own the property at 912 North Eighth, the closest, closest residence and mixed-use building, um, and frankly, the closest building to the property. My comments this evening focus on one aspect of the reconsideration petition, the request to eliminate the residential component of the original existing development agreement for the property at 902 North Eighth Street. I am supplementing my written comments with this testimony. The 2017 Development Agreement changed the property zoning code from R2 to RO. The applicant has focused on paragraph three permitted uses to support the significant change of eliminating the residential units. In the previous city council hearing, there was discussion about the prior council's intent under paragraph three. In 2017, the parties to the development agreement did in fact set out their intent and understanding of what uses would be developed on the property in paragraph two of the development agreement, which states, and I quote, "The property will be developed as conceptually illustrated on the plans," end quote. Those development plans referenced as Exhibit B set out a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. The office and shop space at grade was limited to 2,500 to 3,000 square feet. It was the residential units which were the driving force for that development agreement. Under the development agreement, if there is a default of the agreement, the property reverts to R2 HD zoning. Under that zoning designation, the allowed commercial activity shall not exceed 50% of the gross floor area of the 2,000 square feet, or 2,000 square feet, whichever is smaller. The intent to, to promote residential use is also clear from that language. The applicant is not without options. As the successor to the original developer, it can seek the city's mutual agreement to terminate the development agreement and apply under the new, as the former speaker said, excellent zoning code for MX-1. Modifying the development agreement to eliminate the residential component should again be denied. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Kathleen. And if Stephanie Bennett and Richard Pavelik would like to come up to the front, you're on deck.
Margaret Hampton, I'm an employee of the diocese at 1501 South Federal Way, Boise, Idaho, and also resident Boise. I am in favor of this project. I've been working for the diocese for over 20 years. I think the historical area fits, is fitting with what the style we're presenting. Um, I love the Co-op area, too. I had three children that went through St. Joe's and would often stop at the Co-op, and we're very excited about the opportunities you build there. My colleagues and I would love the opportunity to support the businesses in the area, shop regularly at the Co-op. I'm also one of those people that would likely bike to work. I do, a big biker, I love biking, the green belt, and I'm really looking forward to the opportunity, if you do approve this project, to be able to do that on beautiful days like we're starting to get. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
Okay, let's see what these are. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Stephanie Bennett, and I live at 3810 South Suntree Place. I don't live in the North End like I used to, and I really miss it over here. However, um, I did work for the chancery back two different times, in 2000 to 2001, and 2011 to 2012 for the vocation office. And originally, my office was located in the Trinan, Bishop Trinan House, behind the cathedral next to St. Joe's. And daily, I would commute up to the, the diocese's office up on Federal Way and, and do my reporting and turn in everything. I do feel like that location, I really support the development of that building location. I think it makes sense. I've been a member of St. John's since 2000, so 24 years. My son was married there in the cathedral. I volunteer at the food bank, and I've been volunteering since then at the food bank and have seen the growth of the location of where the food bank is located. Originally, it was in a different place, and so I see the, the church expanding and our, and the growth necessary, and that location for the offices for the bishop, um, is going to be ideal. I think it's just a perfect location. And I think it, it's going to be hard to develop with housing, only because I've seen all of these other buildings. because I've seen all of these other buildings that are now used, the Riffle Center and the house that is the monastery, been modified because of trying to serve the popular Catholics here. I mean, the population, I should say. So anyways, I just wanted to state my support for the development.
Thank you, Stephanie, for your testimony. Richard? And then next up, I'll call David Shirt Woodliffe and Julia Oliver, if you want to come to the front.
Good evening, council members. There is a context I would like to add to this discussion.
Excuse me, Mr. Pavalek, could you state your name and address for the record?
Okay. It's Richard Pavalek, one hundred North Beniposto Place.
Thank you.
What is, I think, a consideration in this is that it is very common for a diocese office to be near the cathedral. You can go to Salt Lake. Recently, they moved the diocese office there in Portland. I was in Vancouver, British Columbia for twenty years, and I was amazed at the activities and services that were available to residents in areas not far away. Information is often available, services for the community, as well as the greater area of the state, of providing services that are very beneficial. So this is not an, this would not be an unusual circumstance. I'm sure if you went to California, you would find the same thing, and many other major cities, parts of states, of basically having that administration in a accessible area where additional things can take place, support the Catholic Church, but also there are many other activities that take place there. There is access to information, historical information, limited libraries, but references to questions that individuals might have would be available there. So I think that in terms of a land use situation, this is quite proven to be a desirable activity to take place. So I'll leave that with you.
Thank you, Mr. Pavalek. David Shirtliffe?
Mr. Mayor, city council, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this. My name is David Shirtliffe at twenty-six oh nine North Thirty-Sixth Street, and I'm here representing the Salud condominium, which is comprised of the two buildings at nine twenty-five and ten oh five North Ninth Street. There are twenty-six condominium units, and the association is in very strong support of this project. We feel that the building, with its excellent design and materials usage, certainly fills up a hole that has been there for a long time, but it's more than that. It's a compliment to St. John's and to other churches in the area. And finally, it actually will have a strong future impact in that it creates a strong sense of place for the area, and I think that it'll be a real asset to the land use, to the community, and to the area. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Julie Oliver?
Hello, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Julie Oliver. My address is two-three-nine-three North Angel View Lane in Boise. I've been a neighbor in the North End for over thirty years, and I was actually going to defer my opportunity to speak because I feel like everybody's talked about what I was going to speak about, but I wanted to mention one thing that I am both proud and encouraged of the work that's been done by the diocese and by Nina. This was a difficult thing to sort of come to a compromise, and I think it's a great example to others in the community of how to work together, give a little, get a little, and end up with a great project in the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. All right. I have Jolly Eck, and then on deck, we have Mark Tavelli and Tim Callahan. Any of those folks? Okay. Moving on.
Mr. Mayor, city council, my name is Timothy Callanan, and I reside at eleven thirty-nine East Santa Maria Drive. So I'm a resident of the East End. I've also been a resident of the North End, and I just want to be here to voice my support for the project as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. Mark Tavelli, one more time? Nope. Okay. I'm going to do my best here. I'll let a Purdue, I'll let a Purdue fan testify if you want. Let the record reflect that Mark supports the project. Okay. I'm going to do my best here. Jonathan Kegler? I don't even know on the address. I'm sorry. Chelsea Lacasse?
Hi, my name is Chelsea Lacasse. I live at seven hundred West Cunningham Place, apartment eleven eleven, which is actually the public housing building that Boise City County Housing Authority owns behind this lot. I am not in favor of this being built. I found myself disabled on my mother, a mother of four girls, and felt blessed to be in this housing project when I needed it, after being on the waiting list for almost five years. I love that my girls have an opportunity now to go to the best schools in Boise, and, but, we've been tortured, terrorized, stalked since February. Listen, there's, there's every, the building is-
I appreciate it. Could you, could you quickly tie it back to the landing?
The building is full of lead. I would invite any of you to come in there. I have evidence proving every fact that I can claim. There is lead paint, lead fixtures. My daughters are having the shower.
This is related to a building that hasn't been built yet? Are you talking about a building you're living in?
Right. There needs to be a public housing building available. There is nothing for women to feel safe in. I live across the hall from a child molester. Okay? And there has to be housing available. Our city has grown. I grew up in Caldwell. There was nobody here, and within twenty years, our state has grown so much, and we don't have enough housing. I serve the public. I try to give back, and I spend a lot of time with people that are being ticketed on the street for homelessness, but it is Boise City's responsibility to be able to house the homeless and people in need of housing, and you're not able to do that. And the buildings that you do have available are full of lead, black mold, child molesters with women across the hallway, and nobody is giving a solution to my problem because there is none.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just real quick, Chelsea, if you want to talk about some of those issues related to the House, our PDS director is right there in the back, Sean. Maybe you can just touch base with them. Thanks, Sean.
Thank you, Councilmember Halliburton, for that. Okay, I have no one else on my list. Do we have anybody online signed up to testify with? And if there's folks that would like to testify that are here in person, we'll go through folks online, and then we'll get to you.
Mr. Mayor, this is Claire Lynch.
Hello, Claire. Can you hear me?
Hi, yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah, could you state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes?
Wonderful. My name is Claire Lynch. Thank you for letting me speak. I live at seven-two-seven East Highland View Drive, which is in the Highlands above the North End. I just wanted to speak in support of this project. I think it will be a beautiful asset to the community, and also mitigate some of the environmental impact of all the people who, you know, work in and around St. John's Cathedral, who are currently driving somewhere else to do their work. So I think it makes sense to have all the services and the church all in one location, and I'm in support. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Clerk, do we have anybody else online?
Mr. Mayor, this is Katie Fight.
Hi, Katie.
Hello. Katie Fight, ten oh six North Fifth, Boise, Idaho. I just want to state my continued opposition to this project. I believe there are compelling reasons for this project to go back to the drawing board, and in particular, the safety issues at this dense, increasingly densely congested corner of Eighth and Fourth Street, and they're only going to get worse. I sent in comments about the increased use in the neighborhood from the VA and other traffic, as well as increased densification, and it's just dangerous there. It's going to be dangerous to cross that and also to make a left-hand turn, especially if you're coming from the west. It's going to lead to more congestion on Fourth Street. But I myself was almost, came within a hair's breadth of being hit by a car in downtown Boise in a situation similar to that, where someone was making a left-hand turn. It was sort of low morning light in the fall, and the building was sort of looming close to the sidewalk, and the lady just didn't see me. And I can't imagine, you know, how that reflective glass may indeed make the situation worse. And in my comments, I requested that a safety expert review all the elements of this, of this particular design, cited in this particular location, with the traffic, with the narrow setting, and all the illustrations and diagrams, make it look like this is a really spacious site, but it's not. You know, and there's a gas station right across the street, and people pulling in and out of that, right, you know, right by that, that same corner. And I think there's another compelling reason, and that's the housing situation here in Boise. You know, we continually hear about how we're in a housing crisis. Rents are unaffordable, you know, homes are unaffordable for people making like regular Boise wages, and I believe that you, as was previously stated in testimony, that the development agreement needs to be terminated, and the church should reapply with something much more suitable for this location, and should include some type of housing or somehow compensate for the lack of housing, and really take seriously the issue of safety here. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Katie. Clerk, who else do we have online?
Mr. Mayor, those are the only two with their hands raised so far.
Okay. If you would like to testify, and you're online, you can raise your hand. We're going to go to folks in the audience right now. Anybody that would like to testify who did not sign up? We'll get you. If you, if you two gentlemen want to come sit up here, we'll get you next.
Good evening. My name is Gigi Larson, five-two-two-one West Ponder Street, Boise. I am for the chancery building with reasons that have already been said. Thank you.
Thank you, Gigi. Gentlemen?
Mr. Mayor, council, my name is James McGuire. I live at eight-one-eight East Highland View Drive, Boise, Idaho. I would just like to state my support for the project. The office uses there in that location will add to the mix of uses that are already in the vicinity and be a great addition to the area, enhancing that mixed use. Also, with relation to the traffic, I believe that this office use would be significantly less than both the prior use where Baird's had hundreds of people using that street on a daily basis. And if I am correct, the metro project also was calculating four hundred and thirty-five, four hundred and fifty trips a day. So the, the traffic use from this project will be significantly less. There have been a lot of great comments, people who stole my thunder, but I would just like to say that I urge you to approve this project, approve the development agreement modification, so that this project can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGuire.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council. My name is Carlos Vidalis. I live at one oh nine six-three West Oleana Drive, and I would like to express my support for this project. If there ever was an opportunity to make an exception, to make a different opinion on changes, this is it. You know, we're talking about the second-largest religious denomination in Idaho. This could have been perhaps the later-day Saints Church, and they're asking to have to build their main governing building next to their main temple. That's basically the equivalent. You know, the cathedral is half a block away. There will be a lot of activity going between the two buildings, and people will be able to walk instead of driving through the city. That's number one. Number two, why do you want to insist on having a little bit of housing in there? It would be a drop in the bucket. You know, the city council will probably get more housing for the, for the entire city by simply approving the Muriola Farms project. I know, I understand it's different, but they're talking four thousand homes over here. How many homes could possibly be built from here? So this is very, very much a very good trade-off between really creating the city's center, the center of, for religion, or for a particular institution, as opposed to putting a mismatch of houses and, and commercial buildings in there. So this is ideal for this particular institution, for the Catholic Church. And for all disclosure, I'm Catholic, too. I attend St. John's Cathedral every once in a while, but, you know, I can simply not see a better situation than to allow the church to build its administrative offices right next to its main temple, the cathedral. Thank you very much.
Carlos, we're considering Muriola Farms next week, so if you want to come back for that, we'd love that. All right, come forward.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Patty. I live at one oh two five-one West Cranberry Court in Boise, and I spend a lot of time commuting down to the North End specifically to visit St. John's and to participate in the activities of the diocese. I'm speaking not so much as a current resident of the North End, but as an aspirational future resident of it. Ten or twenty years down the road, when I'm able to afford it, I would like, I'm being optimistic here. I, I would like to be able to have this thing that so many people talk about of a walkable and bikeable community. I'm a little bit cynical in that I think it's not possible in this day and age to create that, but if we create communities now that are centralized in good locations like this one, then my generation in the future may be able to have that in the future. We could change the paradigm a little bit, but we have to build the community first, or else we're not going to come. We'll just continue commuting out to the cities west of here, as I have been doing. So for that reason, I'd like to voice my support of this project, not in terms of the immediate concerns, but looking ten and twenty years down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. I saw some hand raised online. Clerk, do we have someone that's still there?
Mr. Mayor, this is Martha Chalfont.
Martha, can you hear me? Martha, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep. You have three minutes. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Martha Chalfont. My address is three nine five zero North Hackberry Way in Boise, eight three seven oh two. I won't take very much of your time. I am a parent of St. Joe's students. I'm a parishioner of the parish. I'm also a school board member of the school. I think this is a wonderful project, and I really echo all of the comments that have been previously made. I've also previously worked with Nina on projects, and I just really appreciate the compromise, and I urge you to accept this revised proposal.
Thank you, Martha.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else in person that'd like to testify? Come on up. We have another microphone if you want to step to the right there. I think that might, you might need to turn it on. Is there a button on there? There you go. State your name for the record.
I am Joseph Ziegler. My address is ten forty-two West Park Hill Drive. I am
How old are you, Joseph? How old are you, Joseph?
I am 10 years old. I am a fourth grader at St. Mary's Catholic School.
Cool.
And I support the diocese.
I think that, do you got anything else? I think that's all we need to know.
Yes.
What can you tell me about development agreements? You know anything? Is that it? All right. Thanks, buddy. We appreciate your testimony. Congratulations. All right. Anybody else from the public? Come on up, ma'am.
Boy, that's a hard act to follow. I just want to say that after listening to all the testimony, the pros and cons, I really think this is a win-win for everybody concerned. And I am totally, um, in agreement that the project should go forward. Thank you.
Would you mind stating your name and address for the record?
Yes. Carolyn Yocum, three five five North Hyacinth, Boise.
Thank you, Carolyn. All right. If anybody else from the public would like to testify. John Sheldon? No? All right. Come on, man.
My name is Kelsey Sagrero. I live at seventy-four ten West Camus Street, Boise, Idaho, eight three seven oh nine. And I just wanted to voice or echo everyone's support for this, but also as like a first generation, um, American, uh, with parents from Mexico. I know like the immigrant community has a lot of mobility issues, so it makes a lot of sense to have the Catholic Church centralized where oftentimes people can't drive always. So, um, yeah, again, to voice my support for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to do a last call. Okay. All right.
Hey, sorry, I just, uh, rode my bike down here, so I'm a little out of breath, but I wanted to say that, uh, first, I'm Neil McGuire. I live at ten eleven North Seventh Street. I'm broadly in favor of the design of the project. I think that the modified design, uh, suits the needs of the community well. And, uh, yeah, I would just hope that council approves, uh, the, the current design or, or the design before it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, um, I'm going to say that's a wrap on public testimony. So, um, do we want any closing remarks you'd have, Deb?
Very briefly, Mayor and members of the council, um, thank you for hearing us out on these issues and, and taking another look at this. We appreciate you granting the opportunity to even be here tonight. And, um, I hope you can appreciate how, um, the diocese is not insensitive to city desires and your plans for the city. Um, and they have their own plans and they really do envision a partnership with the city going forward where those plans align in so many ways. So thank you for your consideration of the project. Very briefly, um, to respond to a couple of quick, uh, comments. Uh, Ms. Fight's comments about the, the safety of the intersection. It is true, what was commented in follow-up testimony, that this use will have less traffic at that intersection. Um, it is still a growing area, a busy area. It's going to continue to keep busy, uh, but this will add fewer trips than both approved metro project at three hundred and thirty-seven and Baird's at three seventy-seven, the daily trips for the chancery are two forty-nine. And, um, responding to Ms. Elliott's comments about the development agreement. You know, we, we don't agree fully with, with the city's position they've taken on the development agreement and, and whether, you know, what to extend it needs to be modified, but in any case, we are here. We filed a DA modification application and we are before you for that approval. And the city certainly does have authority to modify that development agreement. Um, and so that is what we are asking for you to do, to recognize the new use that is before you, the opportunity that the diocese presents to cite on that property and the benefits that we've described and you've heard from many public members that they bring to having their chancery in that location. And so with that, I will wrap up unless you have more questions for me.
Counsel, any questions for the applicant? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, um, if it wasn't clear before, close the public hearing, uh, and I'd entertain a motion from counsel.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I move that CAR twenty-three dash twenty, a modification to the development agreement to change the allowed use and site plan on point six four acres at nine oh two North Eighth Street and an ROHD DA residential office with historic design review and development agreement zone be approved and the reason statement and the reason statement included in the staff report be adopted with the added, um, date of July thirty-first in the condition number one.
Second. All right. Give that to Councilmember Willetts. Um, council discussion on the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmembers, dead.
So when we evaluate land decisions, we aren't evaluating whether the owner or the tenant are good people or have good programming, um, as many of the public comments implied. We evaluate whether the use of the land, whether that be office, commercial, residential, mixed use, et cetera, is within the bounds of our zoning code and whether that's the best use for the neighborhood. We're developing buildings that ideally will last for generations regardless of the current tenant or owner. I believe and largely our new zoning code supports that the more that we allow folks to live, work, recreate and shop near each other, the more you cut down on traffic, on air pollution and the need for parking. This is why this parcel matters. When you develop in this manner, you ultimately create a healthier lifestyle. It's also why our comprehensive plan encourages residential in this location. I struggle with this project because I don't see the office use as public benefit, like housing or accessible retail or jobs for those in the neighborhood, and I'm not totally convinced it aligns with the reason criteria. In an ideal world, I would, I would, this would be residential with vibrant retail on an activated first floor. However, I do see gray area in the current DA. Um, the permitted uses as listed in the development agreement as it is today include residential, office slash retail and/or restaurant. Seeing as office slash retail is a permitted use in the development agreement and for the reasons stated in the staff report, I'm supporting the motion.
Councilmember Willetts?
Mr. Mayor, I, first of all, I appreciate the packed house here tonight.
Councilmember Willetts, can I ask you to speak into your microphone? State your address for the record.
Usually not a problem. Uh, I appreciate the packed house here tonight. We, we have had lonely meetings where no one has been here. So it is great to see people. And you know what? What really strikes me about your attendance here tonight is that you really care about Boise and it's the place we call home. And I think what makes Boise special are the people. And I think what's made this project move forward are also the people. I'd just like to compliment the diocese and the North End Neighborhood Association. You know, it's, it's a real show, a true show of goodwill. When you compromise when it's not required, and this project could have died. And it didn't because of the people. And that is what makes Boise special. So I voted for this project twice now and I'm hoping the third time's the charm, uh, to get this project moving. I'll be voting yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halliburton.
Since I didn't get the second, but I think I got the third, um, I'll go third. This is a pretty complicated, uh, application, um, that originally came before a council that isn't here anymore, two thousand and seventeen. None of those council members are here anymore. Got switched from an R two to an ROHD dash DA residential office in a historic district with the development agreements. Like this is a lot. And when something like this comes in front of us, I think it's important for council to really think about looking at this use on its own, the application coming in on its own. Is this a good use for this piece of property? Um, and I would say according to our code, according to our comprehensive plan, um, that it's a good fit. It provides an urban transitional barrier. It emphasizes high-quality urban design and pedestrian orientation. It has below-ground parking. That's why I asked about it earlier instead of, uh, you know, overtaking a lot with surface parking. Provides employment opportunities close to residential neighborhood, um, and it supports pedestrian activity from the nearby by church and school. I think I could probably keep going and there would be more things here. I think if I could wave a magic wand and choose exactly what was going to be here, um, you know, one of the folks who testified earlier said, would you approve a ten-story housing or a six-story affordable housing unit in this space? I probably would. I would love if this was a big, huge affordable housing unit. Um, it would be even better if it, uh, you know, had permanent supportive housing attuned as well and as dense as it could possibly be in this area because it's a great place for housing. It doesn't mean that this isn't also a great place, um, for this office space, um, for, for, for this application. I do think that it adds value to this neighborhood. It's going to be great for people to walk or bike to work, to walk from one side of the street to the other, to go to the different spaces that they need to go. Couple of things that I do think it's important, um, when we're talking about pedestrian activity, there's a great opportunity, uh, for the church to get involved with North End Neighborhood Association's Transportation Committee. They've got a great committee. They're talking about this stuff all the time. Um, there's going to be all sorts of different pedestrian and bicycle improvements that we see in this area. And it would be great for the church to lean into those improvements, knowing that there's going to be high use of pedestrian area in there. I tried to make a motion the first time that didn't go through, uh, but you basically came back with exactly what I had asked for originally. Um, and I want to emphasize my support for childcare, um, in this facility. Uh, we know that there's a huge need in the city right now. That may or may not be what ends up fitting. Um, but again, I would ask you to consider that need for the community. Uh, the last thing I would say is, is I just got back recently from Spokane. I was in Gonzaga and I did this tour of this incredible, uh, permanent supportive housing project. It was a partnership with the school, a couple of other organizations and Catholic charities. It had a community center, it had a community garden, it had a playground, it had a splash pad. It had dozens and dozens of units, um, to house people who were exiting homelessness. Uh, Catholic charities have done a great job at partnering with all sorts of groups over the years to make sure that we're supporting mental health issues, um, folks who are retiring, all sorts of different things. And I think that this is a great opportunity to, um, create this additional space, um, for you all to use, to grow your organization and to continue to partner with other nonprofits, with cities, with different communities to continue to build a stronger community. So thank you for coming back with this application. It's, I think, what I, at least I wanted to see. If, again, if I could wage that magic wand, there would maybe be, you know, huge amounts of affordable housing, but I would try to wave that everywhere and it just doesn't always work. It doesn't mean this isn't a great thing for this particular spot. So thank you.
Councilmember Corles?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um, I'll be brief. I do want to thank everyone for coming out tonight because this is a part of our democratic process, um, is to have your voice and your input on what we want to see, not only in this neighborhood, but also within Boise. So thank you all. It takes time from your evening and I know it's not easy always to get downtown. I think this is a great collaborative effort between our applicant and also the North End Neighborhood Association. Um, we usually see when projects come in and there are odds, and I think there's been, um, a lot of work, this great work that's happened here to come to a really good solution. Um, I'm in support, I was in support of the project before. I'm in support of the project tonight. I think when we have developments that don't go through and with a legacy, um, development agreement on the land, that's difficult. It's difficult to buy that property and, and try to get into all those conditions. And so many times it will call for, um, modifications. So I appreciate the work you guys have done. Thank you very much and thank you everyone for coming out this evening.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Morales.
Yeah, um, I'll be honest, I'm, I'm bummed, disappointed. The original thirty-one units of housing are not going in, but, um, you know, that's not this landowner's fault. Obviously that project, uh, failed. We desperately do need housing. Uh, we have rising generations of Boiseans and I'm rooting for you, Andrew. Uh, to be able, that want to raise another generation here, we have a lot of aging seniors that are on fixed incomes. And, um, to opportunities that where we can find, uh, ways to mix uses, uh, get people living where they're working, be able to cut down on that traffic. Now, we all, we all play a part in that. I really, really appreciate the diocese for giving it the college try and looking at what housing would look like in this project. Um, you know, I think that's the thing I asked a billion questions on during the last public hearing. And I was grateful that this process allowed you to kind of go back there and see if that was possible. Unfortunately, small parcel and I, but I, I really, really appreciate that. Thank you. And, and, uh, who knows what, what projects in the future where, um, opportunities may be. Uh, this modified proposal is an improvement to what was originally brought before us, but I think the biggest improvement is the relationship. And, um, you know, that, that's been really, really cool to hear tonight. So thank you to the Neighborhood Association and to the diocese. I'll be supporting this motion.
All right. Thank you, counsel, for your comments. Uh, I just want to, I have some comments for the public. Uh, I really appreciate the spirit that you brought to this meeting tonight. It's a much different public hearing than we had several months ago. Both those who are opposed and those supportive of the project, thank you for your, your testimony. It really helped us. And, um, thank you for the applicant and, um, all the work that you put into trying to get this to a yes. I, uh, have twice been opposed to this project, um, for the reasons that I do not believe it was rezoned. It would not have been rezoned had it office space been proposed and that the development agreement, I think parts of it indicate that, including what I view as the city's legal entitlement to thirty-one houses there. I am also unpersuaded that, um, FERPA would require us to amend a development agreement that was imposed on a project prior to the, um, diocese purchase of that property. Be that as it may, um, I'm really appreciative of all the work that the applicant has, has put onto this to get to a yes. Um, I also think for the reasons stated by Councilmember Stead, that had we wanted housing there, we could have been more explicit and consistent uh, within that development agreement, a language that runs with the property currently. And so for those reasons, uh, I'll be supporting the motion. Will, will you please call the roll?
Dead.
Yes.
Willetts?
Yes.
Corles?
Yes.
Halliburton?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned.